Good evening. I'd like to call the April 7, 2025 meeting of the Greenville City Council at order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly, up and presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Foreman for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I am going to just share scripture. I'm going to use God's word instead of mine. So, I'm going to share James, Chapter 2, verses 14 through 17. What does it profit, my brethren? If someone says he has faith but does not have works, can faith save him? If a brother or sister is naked and destitute of daily food, and one of you says to them, "Depart in peace; be warm and filled, but do not give them the things which are needed for the body," what does it profit? Thus also faith by itself, if it does not have works, is dead.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Ms. Pro Tem Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Foreman?
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Scully?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Mayor Connolly, before.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, any recommended changes?
I have no recommended changes, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to special recognitions.
Department's Purchasing Division has been awarded the 2024 Sustained Professional Purchasing Award by the North Carolina Association of Governmental Purchasing. The Sustained Professional Purchasing Award is presented annually to a member agencies that have demonstrated excellence in purchasing standards during the calendar year. The criteria for the award include the use of technology, the procurement policies and procedures of the city, minority outreach, staff certification, internal customer training, vendor training, and the use of certain products. The city of Greenville was one of 17 agencies, man, it's incredible, one of 17 agencies to receive the award for 2024, and the award was presented to the city staff on March 19, 2025. We would like to recognize the entire Financial Services Department's purchasing staff, Wanda House, our manager, Cheryl House, our buyer two, and AB Cobb, our buyer one. Again, what an outstanding award for the city of Greenville and our staff. The most important things that we do is to be stewards of the citizens' funds, of the city's tax funds, and you do an outstanding job every single day to make sure that our procurement process is running efficiently on behalf of all the citizens of the city of Greenville. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now, I'd like to call forward our fire rescue leadership, and Dwayne Cooper from the Pitt County United Way. So, Dwayne Cooper, who's the executive director of the United Way, nominated the city of Greenville for a Spirit Award, presented by the United Way of North Carolina. Mr. Cooper's nomination focused on the city's annual chili cook-off event, which has raised approximately $50,000 for the United Way of Pitt County over the past 20 years. Fire rescue chief Brock Davenport and deputy chief Jesse Harris were presented with the award by the United Way of North Carolina on March 25 of 2025. Now, I'd like to allow Dwayne Cooper to ceremonially present this award to the city for the 2024-25 year.
Okay, I want to read my notes very carefully. So, absolutely, this award is given to the city of Greenville Department because of the tremendous work that you do to support the United Way. I will read this back part, Michael, in our conference. It is recognized to be a chili cook-off event. It only kicks off the city employees' campaign, but it also helps, with the help of volunteer teams involved, to water this chili competition that has become a platform for bringing communities together and providing local businesses with an opportunity to support the United Way. So, congratulations, citizens.
(Applause)
So, I'd like to ask Margot Clark, the city's special events coordinator, to come forward.
This is a really special night, where we get to recognize the graduates of our first inaugural In Good Company Citizens Academy. And I hope over the last seven weeks or so that you have had a great time in learning about each other, as well as about each of the city departments that make up the city of Greenville and how we operate. Now, I'll turn it over to Margot Clark for more information.
Just to give a quick overview, as Michael said, In Good Company is a seven-week, hands-on, interactive opportunity to get a glance at local government. It has three main goals: to increase communication and build relationships between the city of Greenville and its citizens; provide education and insight to citizens of Greenville concerning the day-to-day functions and duties of the city; and then to foster, over time, a pool of well-informed citizens or graduates that will share newly-acquired knowledge and insight with others, so that they may find themselves in good company. So, at this time, we will call your name if you will join us on stage. Zachary La Forest Heard. Robinique Willis Brown.
Yes. So, I am so excited for tonight. So, this all came about one evening at the Police Citizens Academy, which just got started up last week. And so, I love to find out how people learn about information. And so, in asking them, "How'd you guys learn about it?" The lady was telling me, she said, "It would be great if we had something like this for the city of Greenville." So, I said, "Well, I don't see why we can't." So, in talking with our wonderful city manager here, I was like, "Michael, listen, what can we get together so that our citizens can do, have those three talking points, just like Margot said?" And to see this come to fruition is beautiful. We, as council, we forecast the vision, and this is a vision that's come to life. So, just so excited for you guys. And I know, like Margot said, our city is in great hands and in great company, and whatever you guys seek to do in the future, we trust that you guys know more about the city, that you, I know that you love and enjoy living in, and that it would encourage you to get involved in our boards and commissions. And hey, one day, these seats. So, thank you guys, and congratulations again to you.
All right. We'll now move on to the public comment period. Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or are scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Yes, our first speaker is Ms. Andrea Pike. Ms. Pike, you have three minutes to address the mayor's council. You just want to come here to the trouble podium, right there.
Hi, dear. Did they get the email?
Oh, I'm boarding that right now.
Okay. All right. There's a Word document that I would like you all to look at when you get a chance to. I'm nervous. I've never done this before.
No reason to be nervous.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, I want to start out by saying, I know that everybody here has busy lives. We've all got work, families, planning the next vacation or volunteer event. It's hard enough for us to find time to take good care of ourselves, eat well, sleep, exercise. So, my point is, the idea that trees need to be given a high priority has probably seemed unnecessary, unimportant, probably a little frivolous. We just all kind of take for granted that, think that trees are going to take care of themselves. Across the state of North Carolina, there are cities that have it better than us as far as the trees. And one of the ways that we measure that is with tree canopy. It's basically a percentage of, it's a number that's a percentage. You take the whole area of the city, and it's the amount of tree canopy coverage that's actually covering the city. Greenville's average is 34%. If you're able to see the Word document that I sent, you'll see that Greenville is a little bit lower than most other cities in North Carolina, at least that I have data for. Another way to measure the success of trees in other cities is to look at their development ordinances. Usually, cities with good tree canopies also have good ordinances that ensure tree retention during development. In other words, for a site plan, they might ask to see what's on site, and then the architects or the planners or whoever can maybe move a driveway, or make a change to the parking lot, or make a change to the building in order to save some of the trees. Another thing that some cities do is they'll have a tree save area or a tree care area, where they'll require 10% or 15% or 20% of every parcel to be covered with trees. Either that means keep all the trees that are there in that 10% to 20%, or if there were no trees there, like maybe if it was a farm, then it has to be planted. I've worked at a nursery for 20 years, over 20 years, and for the last 20 years, I've had numerous folks come in, and they'll tell me, "I moved..."
You keep going.
Thank you. "I moved into my house. There were woods back there, but developer cut down the trees, put up all new houses, and now I need screening from things like the security lights on the neighbors' houses, or just something unsightly, or I just don't want to look at 20 other houses when I'm in my backyard." So, like in some cities, what they'll do is require that 10%, 15%, or 20% saved trees to be in the backyard, and that way, folks have privacy in their backyard. Another thing that some cities do is they'll have urban foresters. And the urban foresters, there's a long list of what urban foresters do. I won't go into that right now there. But I'd love to answer questions about it if you have questions for me. I was a proud part of the EAC's Tree Ordinance Improvement Working Group. We made recommendations for the new UDO that's being written. Some of the systematic approaches that other cities take in order to save trees and also make sure new trees are going to be planted will likely not be found in this new UDO. So, I'm here tonight asking you all to make it a priority, to think more about trees, and how can we preserve more trees, how can we plant more trees, so that our city will have a better tree canopy. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor Connolly, if you have any additional registered speakers?
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Scene. Now, we'll close the public comment period. Move on to consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four, resolution of intent to close a portion of Grand Avenue. Item number five, resolution accepting dedication and right-of-way easements for Savannah Place, Section 4, Phase 2. Item number six, series resolution for up to $70 million Greenville Utility Commission Combined Enterprise System Revenue Bond Series 2025. Item number seven, amendment number one to task order number one for professional services for easement evaluations and negotiations for the St. Andrews Drive Critical Infrastructure Protection and Stream Restoration Project. And item number eight, various tax refunds greater than $100.
All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Are you, are you, are you okay?
The stones.
Are you okay?
Actually seconded the motion.
Are you, are you a Houston fan?
We all need to know what's in that thermos.
All right. Let's move on to old business. Item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine, ordinance to Anx Man Farm, Lot 1, property involving 4.697 acres located at the northwestern corner of the intersection of East 10th Street and Evolve Way. I'll call for our chief planner, Shante Googie, for the presentation.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
This has a few more slides added to it. I am going to do at the very end just a quick review of the slides that you saw at your March meeting as well. So, typically, when planning comes in front of you, we bring you rezonings, text amendments, and annexations. And so, tonight is sort of a crash course in annexations, how they work, and why we do them. An annexation is the process of bringing property that's either in the ETJ or the county into the city limits. Only property owners can petition for their property to be brought into the city limits. And again, this applies for properties in the ETJ, which means they already have city zoning, or properties in the county. The reason that folks want sewer is because it's much more efficient. And what I mean is, is if you develop with a septic tank, then you're going to have a repair field, a drain field, places where you can't park cars, you can't drive cars across them. So, when you have sewer, you have full, full use of your property. So, that's why developers won't sewer. And so, city council is the one body who handles annexations for the city of Greenville. And when a petitioner applies for annexations, it's typically about a 45-day process. Our general schedule is first business day of the month, comes to council the following month. This is a map, you see it all the time, of the city. Anything you see in green is the city limits. We have the purple line that goes around us. That's our ETJ boundary or the city's boundary. Any property shown in white inside that purple line are in the North Carolina first implemented the idea of ETJs back in 58, 1958, and this was anticipation of how cities would grow, and that they are continually growing. Cities establish ETJs generally, they would establish ETJs in one or two-mile increments. So, when a city was adding or adding an ETJ, they would say, "One mile from our current city limits." The purpose of that is to set the stage that that is where the city is going to grow. When you bring properties into the ETJ, then that means they go through our planning department, and they also go through our building inspections department. So, generally, properties, when they're brought into the ETJ, are usually rural farms or scattered home sites. But they do have the same zoning and building regulations as properties in the city limits. And so, this is important, so that if properties are developed, but they don't use sewer, they have a septic tank, they're still going to have compatible uses to what will be future urban areas. And so, what I mean by that is, again, if we left the properties with county zoning, beside of properties that are going to be in the city, then you start getting incompatible uses, or even sometimes the look and the feel. So, you may have an outdoor shooting range, or a junkyard potentially near where there's going to be residential uses. So, that's one of the big important things about having city zoning. So, for the man farm, it was part of a large ETJ expansion in 1972. It's been farmed up until the property was sold to the developer in 2022. So, since the sale of the man farm, the developer has submitted various different development plans for approval. And those development plans are, have been reviewed and approved with that property being developed with sewer, city, or not city water, but sewer, gas, electric, et cetera. We had a site plan and an approved preliminary plat on file. And so, this petition, again, was submitted in January, so it would have come to your March meeting. On the outside, a very simple way of looking at an annexation is the property owner petitions the property, and it comes to council. On the inside, what city staff is doing is we receive that petition, and then we are preparing the staff report that you get in your council packets every month. And so, we, as planning staff, are the coordinators for the annexations. So, we are putting information in ourselves, which is going to be the current zoning, the existing land use, also the anticipated land use. If a site plan has been approved, or even if a site plan's on file, we'll use that information to give you some idea of what may be there. But you don't have to submit a site plan. Staff will give you a reasonable guess as to what we think it will be. But we also send out requests to other city departments for either the cost of them to provide services, such as fire, police, sanitation, and then we also ask if they also are going to provide any revenues. You pay your garbage bill every month. All of those things are put into the, are given to staff. We also provide you with the estimated tax value when the property is developed. And so, when you put this long sentence together, it essentially is an economic question, which is, what is the estimated tax value that you would get for the property, and then also the cost to provide services. This is a zoning map of the man farm. It's been broken up into three different lots. Lot 1, which is the one we're talking about tonight, it was rezoned to General Commercial back in 2008. That was actually rezoned when the man still owned the property. Track 2, which is the blue, that was rezoned in '21. That is the piece that's currently under construction. And then we also have Lot 3, which is toward the back. That was rezoned, and that's for multifamily as well, but that has not been started. This is the preliminary plat that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2022. So, this plat does a couple of things. It looks just like a simple map, but there is a lot of information on this, and this is part of the approval process. So, first of all, it is establishing the lot lines, the number of lots. It's establishing the street pattern or the driveway pattern. And then also, your water, your sewer, your electric is all reviewed, and it's part of the approval for this preliminary plat. Lot 2 is Evolve at the Pines. That is the piece that's currently being built as we saw. That is the piece that's currently being built as we speak. This is an aerial photograph and I had my very talented mapper lay the site plans over top of the aerial. So you can see this is Evolve Way and how it comes in. You've got your multifamily, which are all these different buildings. And then we use the site plan for Lot One. So we've got the building there and then we've shown you the parking as well. So this is the traffic circulation for Lot One and what it is, you can see all these little yellow arrows that's showing you the way that the traffic would move. So for Lot One, you have a right turn in just when you get past the dentist's office. You can come into the lot that way or you can come further down and you can come in Evolve Way. For traffic to get out, there is two-way traffic here at the end of this cul-de-sac. If you were leaving Lot One, you either can go around the end of the bulb and go out to Tenth Street or you can go further down this driveway and I'm going to show you what that looks like. When you are at Tenth Street and if you were leaving Lot One, you have two options, or one option, I'm sorry, you have a right-hand turn, okay? There's also what they call a leftover. So if you're on Tenth Street and if you're heading toward Lowe's, you could make a left into Evolve Way, but you can't make a left out. So at the same end of the cul-de-sac, you also see where traffic can drive through the multifamily to get to Oak Down Way and that will bring you up to the traffic light at Lowe's. Also notice that at, at the end of this drive, you also have the multifamily that's left to be developed. So again, you have a central point for both of those multifamily developments to go directly to Oak Down, whether they want to make a right-hand turn or if they want to make a left-hand turn. This is just a very close-up of the driveway itself. And again, you can see you have a right in, a leftover, and then a right out. Again, this just, just another, so you can see it one more time of how the traffic circulates. So since Lot Two was developed first, there was already an existing site plan. So when Lot One was developed, they had to submit their site plan. So as part of the reviewers, what you see in red are DOT's comments. And what they said in a very long way is that they would like for the existing turn lane to be extended, essentially to make it longer so more cars can get into that right-hand turn lane and get off of Tenth Street. And then the last thing that they said, this last sentence, and I'm going to show you an example, is they wanted a more pronounced sweep. And I'll show you what that means. And again, that's to help indicate you're supposed to go right or you're supposed to go left. And so this is what we mean. This is Aldi on Tenth Street. And so if you were going to make a right-hand turn, see how you have this very pronounced right-hand turn to get into Aldi? And the reason that is, is so that hopefully if someone thought they could make a left, they would realize they are totally opposed to traffic and hopefully would decide to go out the right way. And that's the same principle that they were asking for Evolve Way as well, that sweep to put on, to help indicate the direction. So this is some data. I did not put this together. This is from the engineering department. But what this is, is this is a list of the streets in Greenville that are currently not with a funded project. And it shows you the street, the particular sections of from and to. And then on the right-hand side, what you see is you have the ADT, that's average daily trips. The second to the last is capacity. So you're looking at how many cars do you have and how much capacity it's designed for. They did some simple math. And this is level of service, LOS. And what that means is if when you, when a road is at a one or above, it's failing. The traffic, what have you, the road is, is over capacity. What this is really showing you is, is that the particular section of Tenth Street that we're dealing with is shown in yellow. So that's, that's number 11 on this chart. And then some more data that they pulled is this is your crash data. And so the far right-hand breaks it down with, with crashes and by month. If you look at the second, the second set of columns in, this is looking at, again, your roadways, your sections of road. It's looking at fatalities or serious injury and the total number of crashes. And again, so we've got sort of a top 10. This particular section, this will be number 11. So since 2022, there have been 14 rezonings or annexations that's been approved that are along the city's major corridors. So I've shown those with either a red triangle for an annexation or purple for a rezoning. And then sometimes it was actually the same property that did both, a rezoning and an annexation. And so I have just put the particular streets and either the rezoning or the annexations that were along that particular section. So in our subdivision ordinance, which is, lives right beside of our zoning ordinance, when we talk about final plats, it has this very specific sentence that says, no final plat shall be recorded until the property contained within that plat has been annexed by the city. So it doesn't mean that it's been considered, but that it has actually been annexed. That's a key point. And so with that, you know, why is the final plat important? Well, the final plat is drawn off of the preliminary. It makes sense. You have a preliminary and then you have a final. And so what the final plat does is, first of all, it says that whatever improvements the developer had to do, not the builder, but the developer, has been done. And they can record the final, well, actually staff, excuse me, staff records the final plat at the courthouse. And that allows the property owner to sell it. Sometimes developers will develop and build themselves, but many times developers will set the stage for the property and then they'll sell it to someone else who wants to build. So when you have a situation, well, we have our subdivision ordinance that requires the annexation to be approved, then that means that property owner cannot convey the property. And so with that, I'm going to just run through the other slides. You've, you've seen these, so I'm not going to dig deep into these. But this property is located in the eastern section of the city. The property that you're dealing with now is Lot Number One, that's red. What you see in green is already in the city limits. This property is in a primary service area, which is the brown. This is a survey of the property. The lot itself is about 3.8, but they're also annexing in part of the right-of-way. So it's, it's under four acres for the lot itself. And then the last thing is, as we know, GUC has its own charter. And under Section Six, if the annexation is denied by council, GUC still has the ability to provide sanitary sewer to this property because it's in the ETJ. If it were in the county's jurisdiction, that would be a different story. So the, the developer will still be able to get access to the sewer. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Question about capacity, Tenth Street capacity. I see Rick sitting out in the audience.
He is my backup tonight. I'm just here to tell the story.
It looks like Tenth Street East is already at 92% of capacity. Do I have that right?
It's less than one, so yes, it has to be in the 90s.
So Tenth Street East is already at 92% of capacity. My peers on the council in the last few months, if not a couple of years, we've approved an enormous amount of new development in the eastern part of our city and ETJ. There are townhomes, there are new multifamily, and right beside the property in question, there's an enormous multifamily. So when we're looking at Tenth Street East already being at 92% of capacity, that's based on yesterday's numbers. What do we know in terms of estimates for the future in Tenth Street East capacity and where it's going to be?
Well, it, it shows you it's, it's at .92%. So it's not going to take, it's not going to take a lot of, of trips to put it over capacity. The point of that table is to show you other, other corridors in the city that are operating far worse and have no projects planned by the DOT. It's, it's just, that, that table is to give you an order of magnitude of how other streets are operating that are well above capacity. Like for example, Fire Tower is at 1.4, Stansburg is at 1.37. .92% is approaching capacity. It's, it's not going to take a lot to get it over that capacity.
I just, I think that's very important and when we're looking at all the growth that has taken place and, and indeed when we're looking at where have been my objections to, to this particular parcel, that's where it comes from. And so tonight, we're, really this is the first time I've seen this, this figure that we, it's already at 92% of capacity. And it'll be over capacity within two years, well over. So thanks for answering my questions.
And the, the next, can you flip the next slide? This, this kind of goes hand in hand too, to show you the, the related safety, if you wanted to, you know, correlate safety to capacity, because there is some, there's, there is some relationship of those two figures. Again, let's, let's pick Greenville Boulevard showing it at 41 crashes per month. This is, this is over a five-year period, these, these factors and this crash. So if you look at, if you look at Greenville Boulevard being at 42 per month and then you look at this section of Tenth Street at five per month, again, that gives you some relationship of, you know, you've got to be significantly over capacity to have an effect. And every corridor is different because it's, it's all based on really the driveway density that's driving unsafe conditions.
And I appreciate your assessment in terms of looking at other streets in our community. I would, I think it's very important to focus on this one tonight. And to me, you know, 306 crashes is a lot and five crashes a month is a lot. And four of them are serious or even having fatalities. So when you break them down into the, to the human scale of what's happening here, I, I think these numbers are, are important. But I appreciate that you're bringing comparison throughout our city. But for me, I, I want to look at exactly what's happening here and five accidents a month is a lot.
Well, again, this table was meant to show you that there are other corridors, other types of similar corridors in Greenville that are operating far above that. I mean, that, that was the real reason to show this. So what, what we're saying is that five is really not a lot as compared to these other similarly operating quarters.
And I appreciate that. I want, I think it's important to look at it from a human scale and I appreciate you're looking at the numbers and you're trying to show some of the relative comparisons. But from a human scale, you know, all of these are important. So thank you.
Any other questions for staff? So just a comment, per, per Roberts rules, the motion to deny is still on the floor before the body. So we're, I guess that's where we're at right now. I believe that Councilmember Blackburn planned to request to withdraw your motion. Is that correct?
I would like to do that and whenever it's appropriate for me to make some comments, I'll do that.
Okay.
So yes, I would like to withdraw my motion to deny.
Is there any objection from the council for withdrawal? Okay. Would anybody like to entertain?
Make a motion to approve the annexation.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, seconded by Councilmember Scully. Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes, and I appreciate all the conversations that's gone on about this issue. Our job as elected leaders is to make sure that we get to the absolute core of what's best for our community. And sometimes that's a messy process, sometimes that's a bumpy process. I disagree, and this is no surprise to anyone, I disagree with what's happening in this area in the sense that, not that it's development, development is great, we love to see our city grow, love to see new places for people to live, love to see new businesses. That's not the issue at all here. It's that Tenth Street East was intended as a thoroughfare, to get people east to west. And over the years, with a hodgepodge of rezoning requests and development that was, was not seen in the beginning, we have what we have today, which is really a death trap. And I really want to insist on the fact that the numbers are reflective of the past. We've had explosive growth in the east. We have all kinds of new developments, townhomes, multifamily taking place, and then beyond the ETJ, plus the apartments there at Evolve, Evolve Way. They're going to bring hundreds of people in and out. And if, if there is a, a need and, and really the, the appropriate, sort of, the appropriate recipient of this information, it really is our state's DOT, which for whatever reason has not been able to fund needed projects throughout our city and perhaps throughout our state. I don't know about that, but I know that this particular area really needs improvement. It needs safety features and we, we, this is a desperate need and becoming more and more desperate. I would just like to add a personal story about why, and this ship has sailed for, for this property. It's true, so much work has been done and the zoning was done, I believe in 2007 or 2008. So, so yes, this has been in the works for a long time and I, I'm aware of that and I acknowledge that. My deep and ongoing concern with Tenth Street in general and with rezonings and this annexation and other requests for development, for commercial development that come to us, go back to when I was on council many years ago the first time, and there were concerns raised about Copper Beach, the enormous multifamily development there. And I said, this is dangerous, you'd see people crossing. And I pleaded, and there were others who said, this is going to turn out badly, we need help. And a young man died there. And you know, there's a traffic light there. When I look at development on Tenth Street East, I do not want there to be another loss of life. That's why I have continued to speak out about it, because I think it's incumbent upon us to have those safety improvements in place before someone loses their life. We're at 92% capacity. What happens when we're at 100, 110, 140% capacity? I don't want us to wait until we get to that situation before we have those improvements in place. So again, just to sum it up, in, for development, for commercial development in this area, absolutely. The ship has sailed on the one hand, but on the other hand, development and growth are good and we want those for our community. But my ongoing and unending concern is for the safety and the continued thriving welfare of this community. So with those comments, I have withdrawn my motion and will support this motion to annex.
All right. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor. I know our city manager and myself, we've had an opportunity to kind of discuss what can we do, what can we do practically to address this situation within what we're able to do as a city. And I think that using the tools that we have at our disposal, that being our police department to help to enforce speed requirements and drivers following the, the rules of the road, that's where we can start to have a consistent show of, of, of force in that area. And I know that there are lots of different nuances to that, but having a consistent show lets people know, okay, there's going to be law enforcement out here and if I'm speeding, I will get a ticket or there will be, there will be consequences for not following the law. And hopefully that, making sure that people are adhering to the rules of the road, that that will, will help with the, the traffic that we're seeing. Because I, I know we had a conversation about this last month in terms of, and learning that the road is not actually at capacity, but the perception, anybody riding on Tenth Street might would disagree that there's a lot of traffic there and so the perception is there. So addressing the perception, but also using the tools that we have at our disposal, I think is a, a really good place to start. I know we're already doing that, but making sure we have a consistent show so that there's a consistent change.
Yeah, enforcement clearly is our, our number one tactic to be able to, to deal with these type of situations. And right behind that, I, I And right behind that, I I can't stress enough, and I'm going to keep saying it over and over again, our number one priority's got to be funding from NCDOT. We are continuing to grow, we are a growing community, going to continue to grow this, and we can't stop growth because of this. That the the that's not the that's not the answer. The answer is to make sure that we are collaborative, and Mayor and I, we've been on a mini con of a conference call with DOT to to advocate for this, and we cannot strongly, we got to continue to advocate as strongly as we can for as much funding as we possibly can.
I'd like to add one more one more comment, that that there's absolutely no ordinance, for better or for worse, about this. But I do hope that when this property is developed, there's some beautiful Deodore cypress, some of them look to be a hundred years old, if not older. And I hope that as this property is developed, that some, if not all of those trees, can be saved.
Any other comments?
I'll just say that that I'm I'm glad we're going through this process, because this council is always going to put people first, their safety and their well-being first, we're going to ask tough questions, we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that our citizens are taken care of, that they have a great quality of life, and that they're kept safe as we can as we can do. And we've asked those questions, and I feel confident that this project is a good one, that they've done everything that they can to make it as safe as possible. It has some elements of things that we like to see, it's a walkable community, has residential mixed use with commercial, and some walkability there, which I think will be a good benefit for those apartment residents to have some place to shop that's walkable. But it's not ideal, I I would love it to, you know, to just to do what we're say we're going to do, to have development that is walkable, that is set back from the road, that does have some safety features. And this is not Greenville Boulevard. If you drive down Greenville Boulevard, it's just driveways growing right out into a four-lane road. This is not that. This has a wide or a long slowdown lane, it has a pork chop at the intersection with a median that runs into the property, has access to a stoplight. There's some really great elements to this project that that made me feel a lot better about approving the annexation. And I know that that they've done everything in their power to to be good stewards of the property and to do the right thing. And I really trust the property owners that that they've done that.
Matt, would you, so all the citizens that have reached out can hear, share what you learned when you talked to the property owner about what they have done?
Thank you.
Because I think we're doing lots of general.
I was excited to to meet with them. I had an opportunity to meet with the property owner and and to learn about the project. We spent two hours together, and I learned a good bit, and I appreciate the opportunity that they they provided me. The wider project has some, including the apartment complex and the the other residential areas, and the commercial project in question. They've put buffers around the property between the the cemetery and between the other residential areas that are beyond what we require, I like that. They've done everything that the the state has required of them in expanding the slowdown lane and creating a traffic direction that will go towards the stoplight. I like that. They did say that they would try their best to save some of those trees, and and some of them do sit at the rear of the property between the apartment complex and the and the commercial lot that's in question. And I I trust them that they say that they'll try their best to save those trees. And I hope that they will, and and they've done that in other projects, so I'm confident that they'll do what they can do to to do that. And, you know, we we have we have to develop, and at the same time, just do our best to make sure it's safe, and and I think we've done that. And to just send a message to the community at large that we're going to do everything in our power to to make sure the development is done smartly, that it's done safely, that it's done with some aesthetics in mind, so that we can create a sense of place and and within our community that's not just a hodgepodge of lots of different kinds of development, that that we're creating a cohesive neighborhood structure in our city that we can enjoy, that you can walk around and and be a part of. Because because right now, our city, it does sometimes feel like a hodgepodge of different spots that you can't really access. I live not far from you, this is in my district, so it's it's close to where I live and very important to me and my family. And I and we live in Brook Valley, and that that's can feel very disconnected from the rest of the community, because you got to get across Greenville Boulevard, you got to get across Tenth Street to 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 bike or walk to places. So it's something we really need to work on. And and I should say something we've gotten better at over time. Like I said, the the developments happening on Tenth Street is not Greenville Boulevard. It has a long way to go, we want to make sure that it continues to progress in the right direction. But we're making steps in the right direction. And this project has has been going on for years, they've made a huge investment, it's a local family that's trying to do things the right way, and I trust that they will continue to to be partners with us to make our community better. So I'll I'll be in support of it and reminding everybody that we're going to to keep doing what we we can to keep our citizens safe and their quality of life as great as it can be.
I appreciate that, and Will's found very quickly on the fact that Matt and I had an extensive amount of conversation as he took time to go out and talk to the property owners. I I think that there are a couple of things that is challenging here, and one of them is is who we are here to represent. And so how I was I was elected to represent citizens and to keep in mind what affects their day-to-day lived experiences and their quality of life, to communicate with them regularly so that I am actually representing their heart as relates to what happens in our community. I definitely appreciate development, but I'm for responsible economic development. I think also that how we define development is different. So as I've been on council, one of the things that I realize is that we all have a different perception of what development is. For me, when I think of economic development, I think of things that build businesses, yes, and that people can make money off of, but brings jobs, and not only that pays livable wages. I also think about the safety and security of our citizens. I I think one of the things we're missing here, and I wanted to mention this after Matt spoke, because it puts us at a crossroads oftentimes. But our citizens are at a place where they're not necessarily feeling like we're considering how some of the decisions we make or have made over the last ten-plus years as it relates to development is impacting the day-to-day lived experiences that they have to deal with. And that's the short-term and long-term ramifications of these decisions. And, you know, at what point do we consider how the decisions we are making? And when I say we, I don't mean just council, I mean development, building, investing, impacts others. And so you there there's a place where, you know, you've got this extreme, when I hear us talking oftentimes, you hear people talking on this extreme about we need development and making people making Greenville greater and things of that sort. We have different definitions of what that is. And then you have people on this on the other extreme saying, you know, we we don't need any more of this, and we're, you know, we're worried about safety. But I think that what our citizens want is for us to come to the middle and not be on one extreme or the other, and also keep in mind that we are putting them first, that all the decisions that we're making, we're making with them in mind. I talk about order of operations all the time, and the the order of operations is when you make a decision in mathematics, you do it in a certain order to get your problems right. In life, if you put people first, you're going to get that problem right, whether it's in the short term or in the long term. And I am looking for, I'm from here, and I'm looking for how these decisions impact us, not just today, and not just, you know, one person, but the entire community for the long term. And so, you know, as difficult as the decision has been for me, I'm standing my ground. And and I'm one of those that'll do that, even if I have to stand alone. But I do appreciate the fact that you talked to them, and it did make the decision difficult.
All right, any other discussion?
Just a real quick, I'll try to be quick.
Council Robinson.
Yeah, right. You know, it what's great is 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 this is my hometown, I keep saying that, what's encouraging is to see people like these developers, which are all local, local guys, as I call them. And it's good that when we have people like that, they invest in their community. And they are not just investing in the financial side of it, they are invested in it's their legacy that they're building. It's their reputation, it's their character, because unlike some that may come here and develop and sell and leave us, these people are not, they're here. And I could sit here and talk for another fifteen, twenty minutes about the developers that began much like this group and started small and and then now continually give back to our community with affordable housing. We could talk about the Dustin Mills, the Thomas Stafford Jr., the Thomas Stafford Sr., the Clarks, I mean, we can go on and on. But they have one thing that this group has in common, you're local. And when it's your backyard and you walk in it, you pay attention to it. And I think that is emblematic of what they've done, because if you don't do that, like the funeral home, excuse me, not funeral, but the graveyard, Don Wilkson and all that family's been here for generations, you know, and what you do to accommodate having a buffer larger than what's required and the environment on site, because I know some of you might know, but this young man out here is a big outdoorsman, and and like me, he he loves outdoors more than anything, it's it's just what we like. And so we like to time-maintain outdoors. And so I know they're invested in that, and I know as they continue to develop, they're going to give back to this community, there's no doubt in my mind, this these these people will. And they'll give back to ways like we've already seen in affordable housing and wages and stuff like that. And I tell people, I know that I've seen this town grow from a tobacco town that was small to all of a sudden, we're not tobacco, and now we're we're larger, and the frustration that comes from getting from one side of the town to the other, that, you know, oh my gosh, it takes fifteen minutes, and you ride to Raleigh and it's forty-five, you know? And I get that, I understand that, and we've got the change with it. But I also know that if we don't have people like these developers, if you want to know what they're like, go drive through Williamson, North Carolina. It used to be a very dominant tobacco market, it's closing up shop, lost a hospital, lost a lot of other things because the people didn't have the vision that you got to partner with developers. And so I'm really proud of this crowd for investing in Greenville, because you know people like that can go elsewhere, but they're investing in their own backyard, they live here, they raise their families here. And so when they come in here and say they're going to do something, I trust them at their word, I don't I don't have to see it, I know they're going to do it. And so for all those reasons, I will be voting in favor of this, and I appreciate them, and I look forward to seeing you continue to, as you, as I say, grow Greenville greater. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Actually, I just want to say, I appreciate those comments. The less the consideration that they're local does make a difference.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand.
Oh, no, I'm in favor, I'm sorry, I'm in favor.
Yeah, so five one.
No.
Favor, that's what I was pointing to. Unannounced.
No, it was that that's why I said that, I was very slow.
She was going up.
Uh huh, very slow.
That's great.
All right, thank her much.
Yeah, the church finger, the church finger.
Let's move on to new business, number ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten, request to place public art on public property Elizabeth Street Roundabout mural. I will now call for our director of Arts Council at Emerge, Holly Garrett, for a choice of presentation.
All right. How do I move it forward? Oh, there we go. Okay, there we go, thanks. Good evening, thank you so much for having me here tonight. We are thrilled to finally be at the face to get some public art on the roundabout at, and this diagram shows you, it's the Elizabeth Street, Albemarle Avenue and West Fifth Street area. This has been in the works for many years, and we, the Arts Council, had committed to to both plan, finance, and implement the mural that will be going on the retaining wall on around the roundabout. And so the plan throughout this was to involve our Black Creatives of Pitt County in the process of selecting an artist. And we did decide to do an invitational, so we invited four artists to submit, and we hired them to do this, to submit designs, proposals for the mural. And we're very excited that the image that was chosen is by Greenville artist Sherry Wright White, who is here tonight, if you want to stand, Sherry. Sherry is an alum of the ECU School of Art and Design and also a former intern at Emerge, so it's really great to have her win this competition and to be hired to do the final imagery. This is still in the works, but it shows you pretty much the concept, and Sherry really put the work in with looking at historical images of Albemarle Avenue, and this shows both sides of Albemarle Avenue, but just the thriving business district, this was called the block, and the music and the arts and culture that happened on the block, I feel like she really captures with this design. It's vibrant, and, you know, when you go around a roundabout, it's really exciting that we will have something beautiful to look at. The process of implementation is that this will be digitally printed on four-by-eight-foot sheets of aluminum. There are three of them, so it's four feet tall by twenty-four feet wide, and Sign Smith will be doing the printing and the installing and working with the engineering department and Trader Construction. The engineering department has been wonderful to work with, and so they're going to be coordinating that installation. The Pitt County Arts Council will be doing the maintenance on this, so it is digitally printed. We hope that it'll have a lifespan of five to ten years, but we will be keeping track of the wear and tear of this, and we'll have a plan in place to rotate this out or have it reprinted if if it does show any kind of issues with that. And the bolting system that is going to be put in place will make it very easy to take off without damaging the brick veneer of the retaining wall. Any questions at all?
Any questions?
Congratulations to Ms. White. This is absolutely beautiful.
And thank you, Ms. Garrett, because it's my understanding that you were given a challenge, and you met that challenge and challenge and went out and got the money and got it done. So kudos to you, thank you for this. We're excited. We like we like showing it off, you know, I mean, really putting the work in and and following through, and more to come.
I love that it tells the story of the block and celebrates that area. It's really great history that a lot of people are aware of. It's a really beautiful way to tell that story. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion?
There you go.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Item number eleven, affordable housing update. I will call forward our Neighborhood Business Services Director, Tiana Berryman, for the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Okay, so today's update is where we stand on affordable housing development, and more importantly, where we can go with stronger local investment. We'll walk through in more detail the strategy presented at the retreat in January and review the powerful opportunity ahead with more resources shifted towards city-sponsored affordable housing. So this chart was shared in January, it's no secret that the cost of living has taken a hit post-pandemic, prices are up across the board, especially so with housing costs. Average rents have increased thirty percent while wages increased just under fifteen percent. So this disproportionate change has created and really exacerbated housing insecurity. So this disproportionate change has created and really exacerbated, uh, housing insecurity in our community. So what we know, uh, for sure is that families are being priced out of this, out of stable housing, construction costs are rising each year, and our local workforce cannot compete in current market conditions. Uh, without local investment, affordable production capacity risks stalling. Uh, the city has committed emphasis to revitalization within West Greenville, where currently two hundred and eighty-three vacant lots, uh, one hundred and four of which are city-owned, create opportunity to address this ongoing concern. Past and recent activity in West Greenville includes acquisition of vacant and blighted property, infill development, uh, complementary infrastructure, and partnerships to create homeownership. Um, the city has helped facilitate homeownership for twenty families, um, within the boundaries of West Greenville since two thousand and eighteen. Annual funding directed towards housing creation and preservation, hard costs is solely derived from external sources, as it stands right now. The city's appropriation supports, uh, very, um, very necessary delivery costs, uh, but not the sticks or bricks, um, associated with affordable housing. So that is the basis for increasing our appropriation. Uh, with what would begin as a pretty modest increase to the city's annual allocation, uh, dedicated to construction, we can dramatically scale the number of affordable units, um, delivered over the next decade. The appropriation would begin at two hundred thousand dollars in year one and increase by two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand dollars each year until reaching one million dollars in year five. Um, from there, um, funding would remain flat through year ten. So this framework would create a revolving fund dedicated to housing affordability, uh, creating infill development and reinvent, um, reinvesting program income to, um, to continue the process and to support complementary housing affordability initiatives. Uh, the framework considers current and future costs based on rising inflation and available So this chart outlines for each of the ten years on the far left, uh, the anticipated city appropriation, leverage federal and program income dollars, the number of units produced, opportunity to direct, to direct resources to other housing initiatives, and the total investment amount for each year. Uh, so if you look at the bottom, for eight million dollars, we're able to leverage a total investment of twenty-three million dollars for housing affordability, uh, producing fifty units of, uh, for ownership and supporting other supplemental, um, activity. Fifty homes at an eight million dollar investment equates to about, uh, or just one hundred and sixty thousand dollars per unit, and it also generates fourteen million dollars in program income, three point two five million dollars of which can be redirected to additional acquisition, gap financing for rental development, infrastructure, or rehab of owner-occupied or rental housing. Currently, staff is conducting site assessments and categorizing the availability of land. Uh, acquisition, partner development, and expansion, and implementation of supportive services would be employed and evolved throughout the course of the project and, um, as needs and opportunity allow. The city will assess qualifications-based, um, qualifications-based selection and unbundling, if you will, of the lots to create competitive opportunity for local, small, and minority builders. Pursuit of mixed-income housing will prevent exacerbating conditions of concentrated poverty and foster long-term neighborhood stability. Other techniques to support access include enhancing realtor training, education, down payment assistance, and other cost-reducing strategies that will be assessed to meet community needs. Opportunities to inform and engage the community will be built into the process to ensure two-way communication and active participation. Again, supportive services and reinvestment will be paramount to the success of this program. So the conversation is about transforming potential into production. Our development strategy is grounded in fiscal stewardship, equity, and long-term community impact. Access to additional resources will help, uh, expand activities of recent successes and amplify the ability to support vibrant neighborhoods and housing affordability. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Berryman?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like a very good plan.
Let me just say, I mean, that, that's a, I mean, that's a very bold plan. I mean, we're talking about over a ten-year period, fifty new homes within our community for first-time homebuyers that qualify. Uh, I mean, I've, I've, I've talked to some of you about creating benchmarks, something that we can measure against, and it's something to put pressure on ourselves that we're moving towards. And that's exactly what this is. We've talked, I've talked about, um, making this so that we are giving opportunities to all developers within the community, not just a certain few. This touches that as well. Also works to create apprenticeships that can be, uh, build the next generation of builders, as well as work with various realtors within our community that can help move these homes. So, I mean, this, this is in the process of checking all the boxes and I congratulate staff. This is a, this is a bold move on the city. In ten years from now, I would love for us to look back and say that we have, we have basically rebuilt neighborhoods because of this plan.
Well, and I think it's important to emphasize that we need to leverage multiple developers to be able to get us there. I mean, I think it was first started, I think, on a larger scale with Bill Clark Homes, making the, uh, decision to build those houses at cost several years back. And I think that has spurred, uh, some of Lincoln Park over there and been able to take us to the next level. We had another developer that was in our works, workshop, I'm hopeful that he'll be able to get involved in that, but we have lots of people that we're going to have to partner with over the years, um, to be able to make this come to fruition, because it's a, it's a very bold, uh, strategy moving forward. But I mean, I think that with the number of lots, was it a hundred and four city-owned lots right now? I mean, that's, that's substantial, but that's a, that's an opportunity for us to be able to improve our community, improve people's lives, and also leverage some of those relationships that we do have with developers in our community.
And, and one more before, uh, staff sits down. This is just part one. There's actually, not the Still the Thunder here, there's three parts to this. This is just the first one. And we're going to be coming back with the second one, the third one, and it gets bolder and bolder as we move through this process. So, we're, we're in uncharted territory with, with redefining affordable housing within our community.
That sounds, I think that's right where we want to be.
It is, absolutely. Thank you, this is, it is very exciting, it's very encouraging.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve, presentation on three-year plan, uh, for providing solid waste services. I'll call forward our Director of Public Works, Kevin Mulligan, to begin the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Pleased to present our three-year update on our solid waste services. Solid waste is managed by Mr. Delbert Bryant. Um, under his leadership, I believe that we provide the best service in the state and for the best price in the state. And I'll demonstrate that in just a bit. All right, so what we want to cover here, um, with the three-year plan agenda, uh, we'll dive into our daily operations a little bit, compare ourselves to other cities, we'll talk about the growth we've seen over the last ten years, some challenges to the fund, and then Mr. Joyner, um, we'll get up and talk about our three-year rate plan. All right. Lean organization of forty-eight employees provide, that provides the excellent service we've grown accustomed to. Uh, the makeup of those forty-eights employees is shown here. And these are the folks that provide the, uh, the day in and day out of exemplary service and have done this for many years. All right, our operations. So we have six refuse routes, recyc, six recycling routes, and six yard waste routes. Bulk and special service are also provided, and we have five of the multifamily refuse routes. The routes that are shown in green, they are reaching their critical mass, their maximum, um, they, they are the ones that, uh, over the next year will probably need to increase to, um, seven refuse, seven recycling, and six multifamily. All right. This is the workhorse of, uh, these are the workhorse pieces of equipment. Uh, we have eighteen automatic side loaders, uh, eight front loaders, seven knucklebooms, ten leaf machines, and four rear loaders. Uh, also in addition, pickup trucks and some ULV foggers. Um, but this is, um, quite an investment that the, the city has made, uh, and thank you to the City Council on that to, um, allow us, and you know, it's just ten years ago, we were at seventy-three employees, right? And, uh, we're now forty-eight employees. All right, as our population has continued to grow, certainly over, um, we've seen the construction that's before you every, every month, but the construction that has been, um, built, um, as we saw that happening, we, um, as the population grew, we reorganized our routes to maximize efficiency and to allow for growth in the southwest and southeast areas where we've seen the construction happening. Uh, since the reorganization of those routes, we have seen Thursday numbers, uh, in the lower left or southwest, we have seen probably five hundred additional accounts in the last two years. All right, so, we left room in Thursday and we've seen that room, um, been utilized. So, uh, I do want to talk about the, uh, the workday. Um, we have an eight-hour workday and we see that, we dig into our, our eight-hour workday, we have forty-five minutes for pre and post-trip inspections, those are required. Uh, we also, uh, for cleaning and refueling, uh, thirty minutes for landfill, uh, stops, as well as thirty minutes for scheduled breaks. This leaves about six and a quarter hours, so six point two five hours, uh, for collections. At approximately a hundred and thirty-five to a hundred and forty-five houses per hour, which is our targeted pace of collection, this allows each truck to service between eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred houses, about a house per twenty-five seconds. All right, this equates, we have twenty-two thousand single-family houses, uh, that we collect. Uh, we have four days of collection and about eight hundred and seventy-five houses per day, this equates to six routes. Little benchmarking, uh, I've shown this before, but again, down at the bottom there, uh, we are one of three cities that provides, um, weekly service for refuse, weekly service for recycling, and vegetation, and bulk. The others are Jacksonville and Apex. Um, we are the lowest monthly fee on this chart. At, at, currently at sixteen dollars. Our current existing average of the cities on this, those cities that are the enterprise funds, um, twenty-three seventy-seven per month. Uh, we're, again, offering weekly service and we're currently at, uh, sixteen dollars a month. Our population growth, talked about this, uh, a little bit, but, um, uh, back in two thousand and fourteen, we're at thirty-seven thousand, two thousand and twenty-five, we're now, um, at about forty-four thousand, and we're split, uh, fifty-fifty, uh, single-family makes up about, uh, twenty-two thousand and multifamily's about, uh, twenty-two thousand. We are conservatively, as, um, Mr. Joyner goes into the financial, um, part of this, we are projecting accounts based on the one point five percent, um, population growth. Over the last ten years, we're closer to two percent, but we, we don't want to project so much revenue. Um, we do anticipate by twenty-twenty-nine, we'll be up around forty-seven thousand accounts. All right, some challenges to the fund, um, excuse me, truck prices have risen more than fifty percent in the last ten years. Uh, parts and fuel have increased, commercial labors, commercial labor prices have increased significantly. And as our population grows, um, we will need additional personnel and vehicles to continue to provide the weekly service that we do. Um, just also point out that, uh, probably will need, uh, some site modifications, uh, at the Public Works site. We are reaching, uh, critical mass of storage of vehicles on our site, so we'll have to, uh, figure out how to accommodate extra vehicles and equipment. All right. Vehicle replacement fund, um, currently we're paying one point, uh, approximately one point two million into the fund, uh, based on current prices and our current PPU or period of probable use of a truck. This needs to increase to two point two million. Um, we want to also lower the life or the duration we keep the vehicles, um, that we're replacing, we want to replace them quicker. Why is that? Maintenance costs, they jump after five years. Uh, we see significant jumps after five years. We're also seeing, um, a long-term trend that our surplus value on trucks, uh, have increased greatly. So our new side loader is about four hundred and twenty-five thousand. A five-year-old side loader, uh, years past, used to be much less, it's now, uh, a five-year-old side loader, we can sell for about two hundred and eighty thousand. That goes back into the, um, back into the enterprise fund and contributes toward the purchase of a new vehicle. So we, by, uh, shortening the time we keep them, we avoid the maintenance costs that come after five, the increased maintenance costs that come after five years. But our new rental rate will be, need to be about two and a half million annually. Uh, talked about the, um, showing the accounts, uh, number of accounts increasing as the population increases, we'll need to add additional routes and equipment. So we'll need to get to that seventh route for refuse and that seventh route for recycling as well as six for multifamily. That's two new, um, side loaders and one new front loader, right? We probably expect that in the next twelve to twenty-four months. Refuge carts, one of the things we're seeing, um, the majority of our carts are near or at the end of their useful life. Uh, we're seeing some degradation due to age, due to, uh, repeated use and the weight of contents as well as UV degradation. Um, carts begin to fail as they are emptied, and that is causing some, um, some, some stress points, um, that we want to try and address. So one of the options we looked at, we, two options we evaluated and will be the focus of the financial presentation. One, the first option is provide the same weekly service with residents responsible for their cart purchase, so the same, um, option we have right now. Or the second is provide weekly service with replacement of containers built into the fee. Um, and, and again, during the financial presentation, we'll discuss that a little bit more. All right, I do want to show benchmarking on that issue, that option number two, where the, um, container price is built into the fee. This, um, this is chart of, um, twenty cities and eighteen of them have been, uh, the carts are included in the fee. So, um, when we discussed this a little bit at the planning session, I didn't have this and, um, but I, I did want to present this. And, um, we canvassed several cities as we were collecting this, and, um, I'd say the main reason that they provided was as the carts age and they break during the, uh, the emptying, that leads again to that point of tension. So, um, they've, uh, again, eighteen of the twenty cities, we spoke with Gastonia, uh, the only other no besides us on this, and they are also in consideration for implementing it into their monthly fee.
Is that why it's blue?
That's why it's blue, so, just to highlight that one other no. All right, so we now turn it over to, um...
Mr. Joyner.
Uh, I'll present the, uh, three-year rate plan, uh, that city staff has, uh, developed for the solid waste fund. Um, looking a little bit of history, the last time the rates were changed for the sanitation fund was back in fiscal year twenty-eighteen, uh, where they were increased to sixteen dollars. And that has remained steady all the way through fiscal year twenty-five, so this is, uh, seven, eight years of steady rates for the, uh, solid waste fund. Just looking at the, uh, last year and projecting out to the end of this year for twenty-twenty-five financial comparison, uh, last year, the sanitation fund, um, had a net, uh, revenue of eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, um, largely just due to timing of capital, uh, there. And you can see in twenty-twenty-five, uh, that step up in capital spending largely driven by the purchase of, uh, solid waste trucks. Uh, so we're projecting a two and a half million dollar deficit to the fund this year. Um, that's not too much of an area of concern for us, we see that ebb and flow to go with capital spending, but we are seeing capital start to step up significantly with, uh, inflation over the past few years. Um, looking at proposed future rates, uh, there's two options we looked at, one where we include cart replacement and one that we, uh, do not include cart replacement. Um, option one would be a two-year, or two-dollar increase in the first year of twenty-twenty-six to eighteen dollars, increasing one year for the following two years, uh, up to twenty dollars in twenty-twenty-eight. And option two, uh, would be with the cart, which would be an additional dollar twenty-five in the first year on top of that rate, increasing, uh, making that total rate nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents, increasing an additional, uh, twenty-five cents thereafter, um, to a dollar fifty, uh, bringing the total rate in twenty-twenty-eight to twenty-one fifty. 25 cents thereafter to $1.50, bringing the total rate in 2028 to 2150. Forecasting this out, assuming, you know, modest growth in personnel cost and operating cost, if we may have no change in rates, we're going to continue to see these deficits as we have to replace these solid waste trucks in the next few years. With option one, we would have a modest deficit in the first year projected, which would, in the following years, have a modest increase to our reserves for the sanitation fund. And the same thing with option two, where it's largely the same, but we are including money set aside for cart and dumpster replacements as well.
If you projected out the annual cost of replacement of those carts, is there a way, do we have some peer cities that we can look at to see like a percentage of how many carts are being replaced annually?
Yeah. I believe the numbers, we've used about $800,000 annually to replace the carts. Kevin, do you have details tonight where we can prepare details?
Are we projecting those in these numbers?
We're projecting that in the one with the cart fee. So, with the other two, we would not be.
Sure, yeah, 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 so, but this is, this includes it.
Yes, this would include replacing the cart.
Were we thinking like 10% since we're doing a 10-year lifespan?
Yeah, and that's why you, that's why, actually, you see a little bit of higher funding balance in the first couple of years.
Sure.
Because ultimately, you're going to have to ratchet yourself up. That, that cart replacement's going to increase more and more, you know, every single year, until it gets to about, until you, to the point where you're, you're basically doing, you know, a tenth every single year.
Right, but don't, don't be scared because we had an $800,000 net profit. I know that's kind of a fake one because we didn't have a large capital expense that wasn't associated with it, but that will help offset the first year's $51,000 loss.
Yeah, the, the $800,000 from?
That's from 2024.
Hey, I'm paying attention.
Yeah, I tell you what, that, that 2,000, go back to that slide. One of the things that we've run into is that not only have the costs gone up so much, but the time delay to get equipment.
Yeah.
Has also impacted us, so there's not just an increase in cost there, there's a timing issue there where ultimately, I'd like to think of it as averaging the two years together because really, the delay in getting that equipment, some of that should have come through in 2020, a lot of that should have come in through in 2024, but the dag on lead times on this equipment because of the impacts of COVID. Same thing with our police vehicles. Man, we've got a ton of vehicles out there, we still are behind in getting just because of the ability for the production of the vehicles. So, capital has messed us up in various different ways. Not only that has the cost increased, but the lead times have gotten significant.
Sure.
So, excuse me, have we found more damage to the carts since we've been picking them up?
I'll ask Kevin.
I'm sorry, what was that question?
Mayor, Mayor Putnam Daniels.
Yeah, have we seen more damage to the carts?
As the carts age, right, and to the average age of many of our carts is approaching 10 years, right? So, as we pick them up, we're, we're, there's tension, there's pressure being put on the sidewalls, and so that's 10 years of the carts being picked up, filled with, with their content, so a lot of weight going into those carts. And typically, when we see, the carts are reaching the end of their useful life, but what we've seen and what other cities have seen is that the damage happens usually as the truck picks them up, but after an extended period of time. So, there is some unhappiness there.
So, we're changing our notes to yes, as far as the?
I will say that Councilmember Blackmore knows this because she sends them to me quite often, that people are complaining about their carts being damaged, and the fact is is that it's hard for us to tell which is our, which is due to our fault versus the part of the residents. And this is kind of the take that kind of out of, out of picture. We've had to, we've had to tell several that, you know, we couldn't replace their cart just because they're the ones that damaged it, but then it comes a finger pointing back and forth at each other.
I was wondering also if some of that is leaving the cart on the street, and we have so many, I know, I've noticed in communities in my district, that when people leave them at the edge of the street, we've had so many windy days.
Sure.
And you come and the carts are blown over and tipped over.
Yeah, I mean, that certainly doesn't help the durability of the cart. So, the sun, you know, the UV degradation of the, of the carts are plastic, so as they're sit out day after day after day in the sun, that starts to break down the cart. But if, if they're getting knocked over by wind or if a car's hitting them, that's not going to help the cart reach its longevity.
I don't think you're done with the presentation, are you?
I had a little bit of a summary slides there, just a summary, which we kind of discussed a little bit already, it's just kind of showing, without change, we're going to continue to see large losses in our sanitation fund if we want to keep having, replacing vehicles and servicing the community as we have been. Option one, modest loss in year one, but we would expect that to kind of turn around in year two. Same to, with option two, with the cart replacement. And just a recommendation, staff recommends including the replacement of one blue or green cart, as well as dumpsters into the fee structure, and we'll provide future updates in the fiscal year 25 budget year.
And Mr. Joyner, this, can you speak of the fact that how this is different from what was presented in the workshop?
Yeah, I was going to ask, can you, do you have the rate that was, that was recommended during the planning session?
Yeah, the planning session included a two-year rate plan as opposed to a three-year, which brought the rate to 2150 in year one and 2375 in year two. So, it's more aggressive.
You said 2150?
2150 in year one, so fiscal year 26, and then 2375 in fiscal year two going forward. So, it was more front-loaded rate increases than what we're proposing now.
Can you go back and show how that compares to the free, to the current?
Yeah, so, right now, and that, and that did include the cart replacement as well, so that would be compared to the 1925 to 2150, option two. And that was $1.50 for cart replacements, so it'd be 18 versus $20 without carts in year one, in the first year.
Do we know how we'll decide who gets a new cart? Each will get one every 10 years regardless, or what do we do when they break down? It'll be like a?
It would be a 10-year replacement cycle, yeah.
And if mine breaks in year five, do I get half off?
That's a detail, it'd be under warranty. So, we would, we replace it.
Great, thank you.
Now, I'll also add one.
I think mine's at 10 years.
I'll ask, and this doesn't have to do with replacement of cart, but it has to do with the rates. One thing that I think that we have seen is that while it's good for the community that we went seven or eight years without a rate increase, that takes, that makes it even much harder when you do have a rate increase. So, we're going to, we're going to look at this, I'd like to think that we could get five years out of these rates, but we'll have to continue to look at that from year to year as we go through.
But I, but I think that, you know, you got to congratulate the staff on the incredible efficiency that you guys have done with running that program. I mean, for, to be able to do it at the same price year after year is pretty impressive. I mean, I, I know that we, we offer a very high level of service and to be able to do it consistently and not make a change in the fee structure for the citizens is incredible. I mean, I just, I just looked at the numbers, just pulled the numbers right here. The first year, by making those changes for you guys going back in and re-anal- analyzing the, the numbers, that's a net savings of $27 in the first year, $39 in the second year. I mean, that's, you may not think that that's a lot of money, but somebody that's living on social security income, that's an incredible amount of money. That might be the difference between them getting medication or not getting medication. So, I, I appreciate how hard our financial services department works, I appreciate how hard our sanitation department inside the public works department works. You guys do an incredible job offering a good quality service. And I will tell you, I've used other commercial companies to, for, for trash disposal, by, by far, the city of Greenville is head and shoulders above any of them. Head and shoulders, the level of service you guys offer and the price that you do at is incredible. So, please convey that to all of our employees that work down there, they do, they do a great job. Thank you to the financial services department, thank you to our city manager for looking at this and finding ways to make a cost savings for the citizens of Greenville, because every little bit counts. We just had a presentation a few minutes ago talking about the cost of living going up. It makes a big difference when you're able to make cuts, and same thing with GUC, they've been able to, to cut rates and keep rates at a lower rate than some of the other peer cities around here, and it makes a big difference. It may not at the time, but taking some extra time to make sure that we're crunching the numbers and making it as affordable as possible for the citizens is worth the time. So, thank you guys for your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, is there, anyone like to make a motion?
I will, I'd like to move to approve option two with the rollout carts as presented.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackmore, second by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes to zero.
Move on to 13.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a 13, budget ordinance amendment number nine, amending the 2024-25 City of Greenville budget ordinance number 24-038 and housing fund ordinance number 24-038. I'll again ask our chief financial officer, Jacob Joyner, for the presentation.
All right, this is fiscal year 25 budget ordinance amendment number nine, impacting the operating fund and the housing fund. Item A would be appropriating general fund revenues to upgrade the city's website to ensure it's compliant with ADA regulations. That will increase the general fund budget by $44,000. And item B, we'd be recognizing the sale of Lincoln Park homes to continue the administration and construction of low-income housing, and that will increase the housing fund by 1.2 million dollars. That brings the total operating fund budget to 198.5 million dollars, and we ask the council to approve the budget ordinance.
Any questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackmore, second by Councilmember Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passes to zero.
Thank you very much, move on to the city manager's report. Whoa.
That's what I'm talking about.
Hey.
Same where our debates.
Hey.
Tell you what, that's some good walk-up music for the review of the 2, of the April 10th, City Council.
Walk-up music.
I'll ask PIO to pop that bad boy on the screen.
I miss the days when you would read it.
Just read it off, I might be doing that again.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Brock, you back there?
Brock?
Got to go old school.
You sleeping? Hey.
Make sure he's okay, Brock never misses.
She watching over there.
Brock's never behind.
I think that was recording Marion yelling at us about something.
So, I tell you what.
The agenda?
So, on Thursday night's meeting, we will have two public hearings. First one is ordinance requested by Happy Trails Farm to rezone 16.82 acres, and then ordinance requested by Hillpoint LLC to amend the future land use plan, character map from office institutional, traditional neighborhoods, medium-high density and potential conservation open space to mixed use for the property located near the northeastern corner of Dickinson Avenue Extension and Allen Road. Then we have item number six, request for approval of substantial amendment to the 2024 Annual Action Plan. And then item number seven, the 2025 Home Investment Partnership Fund commitment for multifamily rental housing development.
For Brock. Should we add item number eight for additional funding for the IT department?
How's he pay for Brock?
He's not happy. Not at all.
All right.
So, I do not have a report.
All right, let's do comments by the mayor of the city council, Councilmember Robinson.
Three things, on March the 6th, 2012, a young lady by the name Kirsten McDonald died in a very bad accident at Carteret County. Her father was a good friend of mine, and her uncle likewise was a good friend of mine, we all went to school here in Greenville, so to honor her memory, he decided to get a bunch of his buddies together and go have a golf tournament. I played in the tournament, but I'm not a golfer, I lost like seven, eight balls, and that was Saturday. So, he did it as a one-time thing, and then all of his attorney brothers and stuff, a lot of which still live here in Greenville, because he doesn't live in Greenville, continued the tradition, so we just had it again on Saturday. And so, 100% of the profits go to the Boys and Girls Club of Coastal Plains, which includes Pitt County. And so, I think that says a lot for Tucker and his brother Mark McDonald, they don't live here, they live in Raleigh and elsewhere, and they're still giving back to this community because they had so much titles to it. But what I really like to tell everybody is, as a result of those golf tournaments, and again, I, I think I lost like seven, eight balls on, on Saturday, and I put advertising on it in case somebody finally knew who to call about for a lawyer, but almost half a million dollars. So, that's pretty strong. So, it's called Play the K to honor her memory, Kirsten McDonald. So, Tucker and Mark watching, man, what a great job, you know, and what a great way to honor your, your, your daughter and your niece, because she was one month shy of her 21st birthday, she would have been 21 April the 6th, which is a couple of days ago, and of course, add to it. That's my first thing. Number two, congratulations to the City of Greenville on the Pirate Fest. They rocked it. Even with the construction went on downtown, they set records, they had the most vendors in one day, a lot of just all-day crowd, the most music in one day, they had three bands, and it was the most successful Pirate Fest in 18 years of its history. So, that says so much about Greenville and downtown Greenville, we're growing, and just think, once we get the roads done and we get down there and work on our town commons and get that funding for it, for the general assembly, and then we go in and do the pavilion and get how many events we can have, we're going to grow it any greater. And let's see, finally, as, as all of you know, I'm a big outdoorsman, and so the Minjis, Land and the Miles Minjis, have made it a mission to get kids out of their homes and off computers and off iPads or whatever they are, and outdoors, and all youth. Doesn't make a difference who you are, what you are, what your economic status is, get you out into the woods. And so, they have a nationally recognized Pirate Classic, Classic Youth Day, and it opened up on Saturday, and they had a record number of 320 kids that were paired with experienced outdoorsmen to go out in the outdoors and have a great day on opening day of the turkey season. So, to the Minjis boys, congratulations and all your supporters who did that, it was done out at the Lawrence Davenport's place, and that's a great number of youth to go out there and have the experience that a lot of them would not get to have at all absent the involvement of those people. So, congratulations to the Minjis on, once again, another Pirate Classic opportunity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Scully?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say congratulations again to the Citizens Academy graduates, and thank you to Councilmember Willis for your vision for that, and to our city staff for making it happen. I think it's really excellent to see all those people up here, all kinds of different people. It was really fascinating to see the crowd of people up here, it really represented the diversity of our city, and I thought it was really wonderful to celebrate them here at council. So, thank you so much to everybody involved. I wanted to bring up, for council discussion and for consideration by staff, to reconsider our ordinances around the location of bars, specifically the 500-foot rule. I think our city has changed a tremendous amount since that rule was put in place, and that it has become a hindrance for a lot of business downtown especially, and throughout our city. I think it's keeping new businesses from opening, it's keeping from some really high-quality businesses downtown from expanding their menu and expanding their revenues and, and being successful. It's been a really difficult time downtown, especially the past year or two, with all the construction and changes happening, and a lot of businesses down there are looking for ways to, to grow their business and to expand what they offer. And I think revisiting that rule and thinking about how it applies to our downtown today is, would be a really important step in, in supporting those businesses and making sure we do everything we can to, everything we can to keep the economics of our city viable and, and successful. So, I'd love to, to, to see us talk about that in the near future.
So, Mayor, so, would it be the will of the council for, I know that we've had the 500-foot rule, and then we had the bar 2022 rule that was, that was implemented under the, the previous council. As a step to that, would, would you like, would council like for us to bring back an overview to a workshop of the 500-foot rule and the bar 222, so to give some, some history behind that, then council could kind of entertain that?
Why don't you do that, so that way everybody's got a history of it, because that was a very long, arduous process where I think it would be great if the staff could stump, sum it up before we make a commitment and ask staff to spend a tremendous amount of time on it. I think that, I think that would be good, that would give, you get to, and in a workshop, it'd be perfect because they'll give a lot of information and then. it'd be perfect because they'll give a lot of information and then everybody can ask questions.
That would allow.
We made a lot of, we made a significant change in twenty twenty-two.
Well, that would allow council, if there are changes, to provide direction back to staff that they would like for us to look at. So, is everyone good with, with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Um, and finally, um, today for me is Leo Chen Day, I'm trying not to get choked up talking about my friend. Uh, several years ago, we lost a man named Leo Chen, who, um, was the owner of Shogun Restaurant and, uh, before that Tokyo Restaurant. Um, and he was just a, um, a wonderful person, uh, an incredibly talented chef, a father, uh, a friend and mentor to many, um, and he tragically took his own life. Um, so on this day, every year, I, I have it in my calendar to repeat every year, and I try to do something nice for myself, I try to remember, um, what's important in life, and that is friends, family, uh, taking care of yourself so that you can take care of others. Uh, you gotta put on your own oxygen mask first before you can help the people around you. Um, so, so look in on your friends, if somebody looks like they're not doing great, ask them how they're doing, uh, and try to be helpful. Um, try to be that person that reaches out and lends a helping hand, um, and be, be gentle and careful with yourselves, uh, take care of yourself, um, and, and take care of your mental health. Um, and know that, um, that even though you might be feeling lost, even though you might be feeling lonely, like you're not needed in this world, that's not true. Somebody needs you, your family needs you, your friends need you, your business needs you, you don't know how important you are to this world, uh, and, until you're gone. And, uh, so, God bless Leo's family and the legacy that he's left here, I'm so thankful for his friendship and his mentorship in my own life. And, uh, just wanted to lift his spirit up today and, and celebrate, um, the life, uh, that he lived, a life of service and love, uh, and made my, my life, my family's life so much richer, uh, than it could've been otherwise. And I know a lot of people feel the same, so, so Leo Chen Day, celebrate it and take care of yourselves. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Willis?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for your comments on Councilmember Scully. Um, I, congratulations again to the Citizens, um, Academy, and thank you again to our city manager and to Margot and her team. They did an awesome job, um, planning it out and, um, bringing it forth, and, um, like I said, to see it, uh, come to fruition was beautiful. So, I'm hearing that there's a waitlist for the next class, so just exciting to see how it grows, how it moves, um, forward. Also, the Police Citizens Academy is underway, they've gotten, uh, one, uh, session under their bill, they are also a, an academy that we have that you can get involved in and learn how our, the ins and outs of our police department, so that's exciting, that's going on, um, right now. Um, also, my family and I also had a chance to go to Pirate Fest, and I believe it was, uh, the boat rides that were put on by the engineering department, I think they were a hit. Uh, we really enjoyed them and learned a lot about our, um, town commons, and, um, kudos to my husband for, um, getting on the boat, 'cause he, he doesn't like boats that much, but he, he braved it out with us, so, um, I think that is all that I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Blackburn?
Um, just to echo what's been said about Pirate Fest, what a lot of fun it was, and also, uh, kudos to our engineering department, those boat rides were amazing, that was so much fun, and you're right, you also learned a lot, um, unfortunately, learned a lot about how, crumbling infrastructure from the other side, the side you don't see. And, um, so there was a lot of beautiful things to see, there was also some, some infrastructure to, to, to see, but in, in all, just a lot of fun, and hats off to our engineering department, our stormwater folks, we got a great stormwater department. I know people might hear stormwater and they might wanna fall asleep, it's great stuff, we've got such a dynamic team, and they routinely write and receive millions of dollars in grants to make sure our city, um, has the lowest possible flood risks, so hats off to them and Pirate Fest and those boat rides, thank you.
Councilmember Foreman?
Um, I had the opportunity, uh, last week to go over and dance with the dancing divas over in KP, and, um, not only dance with them, and, but also do their warm-up and stretching. Snap that finger, Michael.
Still waiting on that.
And, uh, enjoy that and enjoy spending time with them. And, um, and, um, also want to say congratulations to the staff and, um, the members of the Citizens Academy.
Did you see Councilmember Robinson over there dancing too?
Oh, did you dance? Oh, and let me say.
You're a dancing machine, I, I heard the mayor's got some, some Elvis moves, is what I was hearing.
And I would also like to say, Councilmember Robinson, um, thank you for reiterating, um, um, supporting local investors and them giving it back to the community that would be decided back.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim Daniels?
I would like to, um, thank all those who've been coming out to the mega sites, um, public, um, information meetings, and the next one will be at Welcome Middle School, this, the eighth, at six o'clock. Are you gonna be there?
Oh, yeah.
It's just, you know, one of the things that, you know, we've always been talking about getting the information out, um, early, and this is definitely early on in the plan. Um, and to thank the members of Kappa Alpha Phi Fraternity Incorporated for inviting me out this past weekend, um, and the mayor for letting me stand in for them. Um, you know, they took up three hotels in our city, and they had their conference, over five hundred men of leadership.
Were you nervous?
Yes, I was, I was very nervous, they were just so handsome, but, um.
You got any dates?
No, um, I had something else to do, but, um, it, it was very good to see, um, the golf, they, they got out and played that, um, with Darren White and, and just different people, um, something that's not known when they come to our city, and that is the positive, um, piece. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I'll keep this short, I just wanna say, uh, thank you to our city staff for all the hard work that you guys do on a regular basis, um, it's incredible. I, I think that, uh, we offer such a high level of service and a good quality amount of service that, uh, is second to none, uh, for all the communities around us and beyond. Uh, so thank you for all that you do. I also wanna say thank you to our city manager, Mayor Protim Daniels, uh, we, during our workshop, um, which is not broadcast on, uh, TV live, but I think we do do the replay, and it's available to be able to see the content that, uh, was discussed during it. We had a discussion about a, uh, facility north of the river, uh, that's gonna offer medical, uh, to that community. It has been long discussed up here on this dice for years and years and years, to be able to offer something north of the river, and I wanna say thank you to, uh, Mayor Protim Daniels for her leadership to make sure that this was a possibility. Um, it is incredible. It starts with a vision, and sometimes it takes time to find somebody else that has that vision. Fortunately, we found somebody with ECU Health, and our city manager did an outstanding job with being able to bridge that and sit down, and he has spent countless hours working on that. So, I, nobody discounts how hard, uh, Michael Callan has worked on this.
They better not.
To be able to bring all the partners together, uh, to make it possible, because it's incredible. I mean, I think that, uh, we can all sit up here and say that north of the river has been neglected for many years, has not seen the investment that some of the other parts of our community have seen, and through their leadership, we're gonna see something, it may be, it may seem like a small thing, but a lot of times the small things start to spark something much larger. So, we're excited about that, and I'm excited to, uh, see the progress as things move forward.
That's just the beginning too.
Absolutely, absolutely, I mean, I think it is just the beginning, I think that, uh, we'll continue to move forward and, and make Greenville greater.
Grow Greenville greater.
Grow Greenville greater, whatever it was, whatever it was. Anyway, on, on that note, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Foreman, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.